Send him.
Address the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. Tim, please make a note that all three supervisors are present. All right, well, let's get to it. Today, we are joined by the Superintendent for the School for Service at Lancaster, Dr. Keith Miles. Thank you for coming, and the floor is yours.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. I'm joined by our board president, Ms. Jennifer Kinnon. We're here tonight just to share what our priorities are. We spent the first year really listening. This has been an 18-month journey. Wanted to hear from our students, our community. We took a large cross-section of our school community, invited faith-based leaders, students, you know, everyone had a seat at the table. And we met six times for two hours, and we really asked the group, what should we be focused on as a school district for the next five years? Some of our hard-to-find groups, thinking of some of our refugee families, some of our LGBTQ families and students, we held separate focus groups for them. So if there were anybody that wasn't at the table and we found it difficult to meet, you know, them at the meeting, we went to them, and they were able to participate through these focus groups. And we had four separate board workshops with our Board of Education, and then some survey participants as well. A new core value emerged that would be health and wellness, coming out of COVID. We're not thinking of just physical health and wellness, but mental health as well. And so that's something that we're focused on as a district. But these are our core values that we discussed with the group. We sort of started with a big list, and we narrowed it down to our five core values that really guide the work that we do. When we asked that question, these are the bucket areas that came up as areas of focus for the next five years. Academic excellence, culture of belonging, this is a school where students want to be, and they show up each day, and they're successful. Family and community engagement is another bucket area. We call it talent optimization and organizational excellence. So these are the five areas that our district will be focused on. There are copies of the plan in the room. The plan is also accessible on our website. So today, I thought I would just go over the targets for each of those areas. So these targets will not change. They're five-year targets, and we'll be working each year at hitting these targets. We make sure everybody across the organization is clear on what we're trying to hit as it relates to our targets. Just to summarize this set of targets, we're really looking at a three percentage point increase on state assessments each year. This is a lagging target, so there are lots of more specific targets that we can monitor day-to-day in the classroom, but this is what we're looking for at the end of the year. So that would be a 15 percentage point increase in proficiency over the five years of the plan. There are achievement gaps that exist in our district. When we look at our data, thinking of our Asian and white students are still outperforming our Black and Hispanic students, so we want to decrease that achievement gap. There, when we look five years from now, we want to see that as lessened, and then decrease the number of students scoring below basic in math. So those are our academic targets. When it comes to our culture of belonging, talking about our climate index, the climate index is made up of culmination of questions from parents, teachers, and students at each school. Each school gets a climate index. We want our overall climate index to go up, as well as the climate index across our buildings. Chronic absenteeism is a challenge for us since COVID, and we would really like to see a five percentage point increase in attendance. And that would be a five percentage point decrease in the number of students who are chronically absent. And finally, our graduation cohort rate, we're at about 79% right now. We set a five-year goal to increase that to 85% by 2029. Next bucket area is family and community engagement. We get a family satisfaction score each year. FNM helps us with this. They've been working with us for about 15 years, just surveying our parents. We set a target of 10 points by 2029, and we also want to tag each student that's being served by a community partner, and we want to see that number go up. So community partnerships is a priority for us as well. Under the area of talent, we want to maintain our current staff, so we don't want staff leaving us to other districts. I'm sure you all have heard some of the statistics about education majors coming out. It's sort of, it went from about 18,000 to 5,000, which is a huge difference. So we are, everybody's looking at how they can retain their staff unless people are leaving for retirement in other districts. The second area is the gap between students of color and staff of color. So this is a diversity goal for us. We're already making some gains just in terms of diversifying our applicant pool. And that's the goal, is really to ensure that we are not lowering standards in any way, but we are ensuring that we're visiting Hispanic-serving institutions and HBCUs, as well as Millersville and our other institutions. But the goal is to have a wider applicant pool. And this is the last area. We call it organizational excellence. We are looking at our enrollment, which continues to decline. We went into COVID with about 11,000 students. We had hit 11,000. We're now down under 10,000, so about 9,800 students. That's about, you know, at least two buildings worth of students that we've lost over the course of the last five years. So looking at our eligible students that are in our zone, who are attending other schools, like cyber charters, we have students who are homeschooling, and students who might be attending private school, it's about 10% of the population that's out there. We want to, right now, it's at 88%, so there's 12%. We want to make sure we're capturing at least 2% more of those students that we're losing to other school choices. Satisfaction score in our buildings, I'm not sure if you all know, but we have a phased approach. There are, you know, four phases of construction. We're in the final phase, and then we go back to phase one and continue to support our buildings. But we want a four out of five satisfaction score from our stakeholders. And finally, 75% of our financial allocations, we want them to be equitably distributed as opposed to equally distributed. You know, equal is one per school, no matter what the challenges are at that school, or the number of students at that school. Every school just gets the allocation. An equitable distribution is looking at the needs of each school, community. And you might see a couple of staff members at one school and a half a staff member at another school, or staff members splitting their time between two buildings. So we're looking at opportunities where we can shift more toward that equitable approach as opposed to the equal approach. And that is our goals for the next five years, and that all came out of our strategic planning work with the community. We're six months in, and we recently, you know, updated our community board, and we'll be at the LEF breakfast as well, updating the community around where we are as it relates to these goals so far.
Thank you.
There are no questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Miles. I mean, one of the reasons why I wanted you here tonight was to kind of renew and be reminded of our partnership, Lancaster Township, especially to put faces to the elected officials in Lancaster Township, as well as to work closely with members of the school board. I know a lot of your school board members are from Lancaster Township, so I think it's always important that, you know, we put faces to the emails and as well as be reminded of the equal partnership that we all have with the school district and township. And I really appreciate you coming here tonight.
Well, thanks for having me.
Anything you guys have for us?
No.
Okay.
I just wanted to share our priorities.
I mean, in terms of questions, or the construction projects are going well, the staff's seen the work really well. I believe you're meeting with the chief to talk about SROs in the coming week or so?
Absolutely.
Great. Well, I mean, our, we've enjoyed, especially in the last couple of years, the relationship on a staff level. And if you ever hear otherwise, please be sure to reach out and let us know. I mean, all our departments seem to work really well together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Plan of Fitness, I received a request for a variance for a fire pump for that facility. They're doing some renovations. On the 4th of February, I witnessed a flow test by Commonwealth Fire Protection. Flow test was reasonable. There's a set of curves or a set of charts for that flow, worst case, best case, and somewhere in the middle. And when we did the flow test, it was somewhere in the middle. So it's the recommendation of the fire company to allow that middle curve as the accepted parameters. Like Fosson mentioned, we have our own nuisance customer, Regal Cinemas. They've had just about nine false alarms in the month of January. Codes has helped us significantly with that. I believe you paid a visit over to them and chatted with management. So knock on wood, they've been quiet the past week, week and a half. From a personnel standpoint, I'd reached out to township manager, make sure there wasn't any conflict. We had started a fire marshal position within the township. Many of you know Ron Comfort Jr., Ronnie. He's been a chief for thirty-some years in the township. And there were some significant changes this past election in the fire department. We elected the chief. We brought in a new set of officers. But to keep Ron involved and engaged in the fire department, I often do the fire marshal position. So just so you're aware of what that is, we have no legal authority from the fire department's side. His primary responsibility is to handle our Knox Box program in-house, do plan reviews. He loves burn complaints, so our burn awareness, he's all over that. Permit review and to fill in with command staff as needed. So we'll probably see him on fire scenes hopefully. Training, one of our chiefs completed the ICS 300 program. Melvin Reyes is an assistant chief. For those who aren't aware, the ICS program is geared more towards large incidents, which I'd say we're not immune to here in the township. Between the healthcare facilities, the wastewater treatment plant, and the significant chemical presence that's there, we could end up using some of the content that's taught in this class. Upcoming dates for us, Saturday, February 15th, we have our Saturday morning breakfast. Township manager was there last time. You were the talking station. Guys really appreciate seeing you there. So eight AM, we get together, have breakfast, and it's just purely a social event. Just see the families, get everybody together. Tuesday, February 25th at seven o'clock PM, we have our board meeting. And Tuesday, March 4th at seven, we have our general company meeting. Any questions for me?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
No.
Thank you. Thank you. Police reports, January 2025, 426th service, 11 misdemeanor felony arrests, 38 crash investigations, fatal crash, 60 traffic citations, 35 traffic warnings, and no overdose incidents. Recycle report, January 2025, 16.96%. Safety committee minutes, any issues with those?
No.
No? Okay. Sure reports, those can be found in order. We don't have anything for sure reports.
No, we usually just have those in the back if anyone wants to take a look at them, and they're available for inspection at any time at the front desk.
Printed copies of the reports are available at township office for a nominal fee. It can be viewed printed through the website. Workshop, and now we're going to go into workshop reports. First up, planning and voting, Mr. John Donnelly.
Good evening. See, tonight on the agenda, there's several items for you to vote on. Nothing too, I'm not too crazy there. Biggest thing I have on notes for you is, as you heard the chief talk about the fires, the two houses on West End Avenue were both condemned. The house on Marietta Avenue had minor damage. We were able to keep the folks in there. And Wilderness Road also was condemned. There's some pretty extensive damage to the second floor there. We had several, maybe half a dozen or so complaints over the last couple of weather events on snow and icy sidewalks. We spoke to, I either spoke to or sent letters to all those people, and they all complied within forty-eight hours or so, or the weather helped them, but they complied nonetheless. And last, as you probably saw on the website and our social media, the property investment is open. We're accepting applications for that. We're getting quite a few. We're, you know, we plan to help as many folks out as we can, but unfortunately, I'm sure we're going to run out at some point, just based on the number of applications we've gotten just so far. And we plan on keeping that open. I believe we post it until the end of March, and then we'll start reviewing them.
All right. Thank you.
That's it.
Next up, Andrew Kevin here, Ben Weber.
Evening, everyone. I really don't have a whole lot to highlight except for the MS4 draft permit regulation changes. They're out for public comment, and a very substantial change in that is to shift away from pollutant reduction and towards volume management. So rather than what we've been doing for the last, how many years, of trying to cut down sediment nitrogen and phosphorus, they're saying, DEP is saying, look, we're just going to change everything and focus on reducing the amount of runoff volume that each municipality is having runoff into the waterways. I get it, I understand it, but it is a huge change. And I'm not sure that I really even follow all of the ways in which they're wanting us to do that. So generating a list of comments and additional questions, seeking clarification so that we can better be prepared for what's coming down the pike for us. That's all I wanted to say.
Perfect. Thank you, Ben. Any questions? All right. Next up, Public Works, Mr. Dendraw.
Thank you. As you guys are aware, we've had a couple of winter storms in the month of January. We're having one coming here in February. A couple actually ice storms lately. Manage all of those very well. A few things to note on my report, we've been working on the River Road pedestrian issue, working with LTAC to look at the pedestrian issue over there, see if there's anything we can do to improve that. And we've been working through some stuff for the upcoming tree committee as well. A few items to note here, we'll be working on the paving plan for 2025, and I hope to have that before you for the April meeting. We're a little behind April to get to March, but we'll have it before you for April.
Thank you. Any questions?
Nope. Pictures of green patient cases. Me too.
Make sure conflict.
Thank you to you and the Public Works Board, doing a great job with the snowplow. I understand that the hours can be long and dangerous sometimes, but you know, thank you for, to hear the guys for being out there.
Appreciate it.
Police chief, Guts.
Good evening. So we have our first month under our belt. Everything's going fairly well. The personnel are happy and getting to know the community. You gave all of our stats here. For the most part, our stats are the traffic citations, crashes, and traffic warnings. Confident they're very accurate. Our calls for service is accurate. It's pretty much in line with what we saw in previous months when Mannheim Township was covering. The misdemeanor felony arrests is fairly accurate. So each month, we have to submit what's called a UCR report to the state that eventually goes to the feds. It's a uniform crime reporting. To elicit that information, it's only as good as what information's getting put into your records management system. The guys and gals are learning. It's a little bit of a learning curve. Hopefully, I can expand on some of our stats, and I can feel confident that they're going to always be more accurate. These are pretty accurate as far as misdemeanor felony arrests, but again, it's a new system. They're learning it. So it's going to be a little bit of growing pains with the records management system. None of them had used CODI systems before, but the crash reports, the incident reports are looking good so far. But just to give you a little idea on the statistics here, we have a footprint on social media now. We've got an Instagram account, a Facebook account, and our Crime Watch portal. That's geared a little bit more towards specifically just police actions is in its creation right now. It'll have a lot of links to different entities within Lancaster County. But part of some of the social media sites we do have up now, we're able to just expand, put in some of the alerts that come from the township. On the township webpage, we can put it on the police side as well to capture more viewers. So the community interaction has been starting. Corporal Burns is very interested in this. He's facilitating a lot of community interaction. He's met with a couple of church groups. I know he went with the fire company. We have two Coffee with the Cop functions coming up here in February, just to try and start some community outreach programs. I met with the assistant superintendent, and they're kind of, I guess, director of security for the school district about the SRO program. They want one, they want one full-time, as far as the school year, full-time to at least start for their 25, 26 school year. So I have a meeting set up with the superintendent towards the latter part of February to iron out a little bit more details on that. Been starting interviews for two part-time receptionists that we hopefully will have over at the police department. Got a fair amount of candidates. Actually, had to close off the job posting, just because I was getting so many, I wanted to process the first batch of applicants, or the first batch of applicants that looked good as far as resume and cover letter. That's been starting. We had a little bit of internet connectivity issues in the cars where it was moving a little slow. That seems to be rectified. Just makes the officer's jobs a lot easier when they're running programs that require the internet. The speed helps with that. One area I saw a little deficiency in with our forensic services capabilities as far as processing scenes. So there's one officer that had some training, and he's going to be going to some further training to get some, another person on the street that can confidently process crime scenes. Our detective, Josh Whiteside, he was a forensic services unit member in the state police for probably about eight years. He's very well versed at that, but it's nice to have someone else that has his capabilities, at least one more person. So it's going really well. The first month is going well. That's all I have. Do you guys have any questions for me?
No. Not for me. Thank you, chief.
Thank you for the tour.
Yeah. Up next, township manager, Mr. Welling.
The benefit of having a good and thorough staff is I don't have very much to offer other than a few housekeeping things. One is, under announcements, the tree work group will meet for the first time on February 20th at 2:00 PM here at the township office. We will, we'd like to have an executive session to talk about a contract issue with the fire department at the conclusion of this meeting before adjournment. And I want to note that Matt Creams here, when we get to the section where we talk about amending the ordinance for solicitation, I'd ask that we call on him to kind of lead us through that process. Is that on the agenda, Ray?
Yes.
Okay. I'm watching the chair nervously.
It's my eyes.
New business, A.
Got it. What's this? All right. Thank you. Announcements, February 17th, 2025 is President's Day. We're closed, township office is closed. Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, at 7:00 PM is the Planning Commission meeting here at 12:40 Maple Ave. Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, the zoning board meeting is canceled. Monday, March 10th, 2025, 6:00 PM is our next board supervisors meeting right here at 12:40 PM. If I may add, the February 20th tree committee, February 20th, the township tree committee will be meeting here.
Yep, 2:00 PM.
2:00 PM.
Yep.
All right. Old business, none. We will now move into planning and zoning.
LTTC 331-6, or excuse me, LTTC 331, 631 Constoga Boulevard, stormwater management site plan modification waiver request. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve stormwater management site plan modification and waiver request for 631 Constoga Boulevard. At their meeting on January 21st, township, next township planning commission recommended approval of the modification request conditioned upon Mr. Weber's December 31st, 2024 review letter.
Second. Motion to second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Another motion.
LTTC 330, 2460 Honeysuckle Lane subdivision plan time extension. We're simply acknowledging that we've received a time extension from Land and Grove Harbor Engineering on behalf of A. Scott and Karen Good until April 17th, 2025, for the approval of 2460 Honeysuckle Lane subdivision plan.
Acknowledged.
1044 Marietta Avenue demolition permit application, ZP 25-0017. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a request from Steve Funk, Marotta Maine Architects on behalf of Jason and Sarah Hurst to alter a historic resource at 1044 Marietta Ave. At their meeting on February 3rd, next township historical commission recommended approval of the subject demolition permit application.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye.
LTTC 317, 1750 Wabank Road. Wabank Road self-storage, preliminary and final land development plan. Make a motion that we approve request from Derek Pissinger, Barley Snyder, for extension of time until July 15th, 2025, record the approved land development plan in conjunction with a request to reinstate the land development plan for 1750 Wabank Road, which is conditionally approved by the board supervisors meeting on September 9th of last year.
Second. Motion to second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. New business.
Ordinance 2025-01, an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the township Lancaster, repealing chapter 221, soliciting and canvassing, and adopting a new chapter 221. Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve ordinance 2025-01. Board of Supervisors of the township has determined that the code of township of Lancaster, chapter 221, soliciting and canvassing should be repealed and a new chapter 221 adopted.
Discussion. Well, second? I'll second that. Second?
Thank you, members of the board. For the minutes, I'm Matt Cream, I'm the township solicitor. Members of the board, before you for consideration is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances by repealing in whole chapter 221 and adopting a new chapter 221. We suggested this as the appropriate way to approach it rather than dealing with individual amendments throughout. There are several amendments to the existing ordinance, but there aren't many. Some of them are clarifying, excuse me, are clarifying amendments. So we have added in 221.1, for example, that a permit only allows a person to canvas or solicit business on a public street or sidewalk. So any private streets, any private property such as parking lots of apartment buildings, the apartment buildings themselves are not permitted. Places for solicitation, our permit does not give anybody permission to do that. Anybody that wishes to do that would have to seek permission from the homeowners association if they own the streets and the sidewalks, or the apartment owner, similar circumstances. We did remove from section 22.4 a general provision that allowed the township staff to require any other information as part of the application. We've made it strictly an objective application, nothing subjective about it. And we did provide explicitly what is implicitly already provided, that if anybody has denied a permit, there is an appeal process. It falls into the general appeals under the local agency law and would come before the board of supervisors. We have retained the exemptions. So for example, charitable, religious, nonprofit organizations, representatives of political organizations are exempt from getting a permit, but not exempt from the two regulatory provisions of the ordinance, which are the hours during which someone can visit properties on a public street or sidewalk, and also the prohibition if there is a no peddler sign, no solicitation sign on the property. So those who are exempt from getting a permit are still required to only operate during the hours that the ordinance provides, and not to visit properties where there is a clear indication typically a sign for no solicitation. Probably the provision of the ordinance that might inspire some conversation are the hours. We specifically were asked to consider expanding the hours from what they currently are. We did go through all of our neighbors, and they are all over the place. The city, for example, has no hours of limitation. Mannheim Township is 9:00 PM, or 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. However, reaching out a little further, the majority are 9:00 to 9:00, 9:00 to 8:00, somewhere in there. And we have advertised this as 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, but the board may consider that and amend it as you wish to establish. We would suggest it's the evening hour that is probably the one that is most in our focus.
Is it appropriate to have, as the sunset provision of the day be literally the sunset?
So we could, because I am that kind of a nerd, I Googled what is the earliest sunset and what is the latest sunset? And at no time during the year is sunset as late as 9:00 PM. This time of the year, on the winter solstice, it's somewhere between, and I did learn that there's a difference between sunset and dusk. Dusk is earlier than sunset. So many of our ordinances talk about, like parks are open sunrise to dusk. Sunset is about a half hour after dusk. And the earliest that the sun sets, of course, is on the winter solstice, and it's somewhere between 5:30 and 6:00 PM. So it's just an enforceability issue.
Okay. I would say almost all of our solicitation applications come between Memorial Day and Labor Day.
That makes sense.
And is there any danger, I mean, this whole thing came about as a, from a letter from a lawyer, if we do restrict the hours to, say, 7:00 PM, do we expose ourselves to reasonable challenge, or?
So then it becomes a matter of reasonableness, and we would have to challenge justify that based on, you know, our sensibilities. Again, our, perhaps our closest neighbor, most like us in the nearby neighborhoods, for example, is Mannheim Township. And of course, we shared until our new police force. It would have made sense if we were still sharing a police force to have similar hours, and theirs is 5:00 PM. That's the earliest of the ordinances that I canvassed.
Same, the only issue for exceptions, if the timeframe is being enforced on political canvassing, 5:00 PM is a tight window for knocking on doors.
Right.
As someone who works a regular job, and then also knocked on doors.
Right. And, you know, there's also the consideration of two worker households, or, you know, in today's world, three or four worker households where we have shared housing arrangements, where nobody is home during the business, the traditional business day. You know, do you want to, again, anytime we complicate something, we make it harder to enforce. You know, between June 21st and December 21st, it's 8:00 PM. December 21st to June 21st, it's 6:00 PM.
Could we, would it make sense to adopt it and then amend it?
Well, we don't have to act on it this evening. This is...
Right. As in all ordinances, we advertise this, that you may consider acting on it tonight, or you, we are in a legislative hearing at this point, or you may put it on your agenda for consideration of adoption only at a public meeting within 60 days of tonight.
That would give us time to, would we have to amend and re-advertize if the change was simply ours?
I'm going to suggest not.
Okay.
But, you know, we can talk about doing that as a belt and suspenders.
Sure. I mean, if we go from 9:00 till 8:00, or 9:00 till 7:00, I think that's somewhat de minimis. I mean, if we would go from 9:00 to 5:00, it might necessitate...
It might necessitate something.
Yeah.
I feel like 8:00, I feel like 8:00 is a reasonable time, only in, I'm just using like Halloween as an example, like we always end Halloween at 8:00.
8:00 PM.
So it's not 9:00, it's not 10:00. That's just mine.
And again, for the majority of our permits, 8:00 is going to be either still light or at worst dusky.
All right. So let's say we wanted to amend what the draft currently says, which I believe is 9:00 to 8:00. Procedurally, how would you recommend we do that?
So I would suggest that, so we have a motion and a second, but a motion to postpone, although Robert's rules is not the law, it is our guide, a motion to postpone is always in order whether there is a motion pending or not. So if you wish to postpone to our March, same night, March 10th, right? Yeah. Meeting.
I'll move to postpone to the March meeting, so we can get our draft settled.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 I would just, I know you called for public comment generally, but ordinances are special, so I would just ask if you, ask if there's any public comment before we move on from this item.
Is there any public comment before we move on? Is there any public comment before we move on?
Police or fire have any concerns?
Okay.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Matt.
New business, Columbia Borough Municipal 2025 Yard Waste Agreement. I move to, to Columbia Borough Municipal 2025 Yard Waste Agreement. This includes an increase in the per ton cost of all yard waste to $40 per ton. Agreement is effective from January 1, 2025, December 31st, 2025.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Resolution 2025-02, Certification of Uncollected Real Estate Taxes in 2024. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 2025-02 certifying which taxes were levy municipal school and county taxes, the whole or any part of which taxes were due and payable in the calendar year of 2024, and which remain unpaid.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2025-03, Certification of Uncollected Real Estate Taxes from September 2023 to December interim. The board will act to, make a motion to approve. Resolution 2025-03 certifying which taxes were levy municipal school and county taxes, the whole or any part of which taxes were due and payable from September 2023 to December interim, and which remain unpaid.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Guest recognition and participation.
Can I just do my emergency management report real quick?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. So for Emergency Management for Lancaster Township, as Chief Frye mentioned, the fires at 501 through 503 Southwest End Avenue, I attended initially with Lafayette Fire Company, but was not needed in that capacity, so then switched over to emergency management. And this is the fire department with, working with the displaced residents, trying to locate some animals and getting them in touch with the Red Cross. I was also on the scene at Wilderness Road, and was looped in with Chief Slover there as well with that situation. I was invited to attend the spaghetti supper at Hamilton Park Church on March 1st to talk some about some preparedness stuff for about 15 minutes, so I do intend to go there. For those of you that aren't aware, the county's Hazard Renegation Plan process is in progress right now. Hopefully, it will be out later or towards the spring, but it is open for public comment. So if you go to the county's Emergency Management site, if you want to look at that, you can certainly do so. I would assume once that's done, then we can maybe look into it to see how it maybe applies locally to the municipality. March 10th, I've been in talks with John Donnelly about doing a presentation as far as since he's new to his role, permanent role as the zoning officer for Lafayette for the fire company, and then also talking about emergency management and what those initiatives look like to the first responders. We would be more than happy, I'm sure, to come to Lancaster Township and do the same thing for the members there. That is on the 10th after the supervisor meeting. We have that, but it's still on the calendar. And then also, I received a phone call from Mr. Don Rogers from the Lancaster Seventh Day Adventist Church, which is in East Lancaster Township. He would like to connect with the police department and the fire department, which I am going to do. I just talked to him over the weekend. So just about some planning stuff for their facility there. So that's what I have going on for now. Thanks, Dicky. Thank you.
Anybody else?
We missed a topic. We had our annual awards banquet towards the end of '24. Unfortunately, Supervisor Amford could not attend, and he was the recipient of the award. Sort of fitting, Tom Shaller Award. The Tom Shaller Award is for significant contributions to the fire department. And I think everyone's well aware, between the building and your support for us, we greatly appreciate it. So 2024 Tom Shaller Award, Supervisor Amford.
I'll attend next time.
All right. Well, we're getting headed to executive session now. So, and then after we come back, that's when we adjourn.
When business is done.
When business is done, so.